Acknowledge the band and the chemical band of Kalafuea that lived on the creeks of ours that we call the Marys and the Muddy. And acknowledge these people still with us, the tribes of Grand Grown Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of the Solits Indians here on the coast of Oregon. And moving on, I'm Zano Giraud, Commissioner and Chair. And I'll pass it on to Vice Chair Wise.
I am Wise, Commissioner, Vice Chair. Pass over to Pat.
So Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Sheriff Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance, County Council.
Staff, would you like to exist yourselves?
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioners.
I'll jump in. Sorry, Teresa. Good morning, everybody. Kate Portia, Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office.
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioners Staff.
April Holland, Public Health.
Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department.
Joe Martin, Benton County Surveyor.
Paul Rosie, Health Department.
Greg Barret, Community Development Department.
Kean Hammond, DIO Specialist Engineering.
Ben Brown, City Building Coordinator.
I think that's everyone. We do have a couple callers, but I think the other one is Joe and the other one is probably the main phone in the meeting room. So, thank you all. We will move on then to comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, seeing no one here with us today from the general public, we will move on to reviewing and approving the agenda. The, there are a handful of additions to the agenda this morning. Under other, we are going to add four items. One is the formal adoption of the Equity Plan that was submitted to the Oregon Health Authority last Friday to address remaining issues of trying to level up the playing field on vaccination. What our strategy is going to be there. Then second is to discuss NACO Steering Committee auctions of before, because the deadline at AOC is coming right up to submit names for those, considering a subscription to capital breasts and a renewal. And lastly, we're going to go into executive session for deliberation with negotiating team. And we will do that at the end so that we can excuse others and just proceed to that executive session. Nick Kirk will be joining us for that. So with that, I would accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second, all in favor, signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Onward. Book session. First order of business is to hear an update from the Emergency Operations and Department Operations Centers, beginning with Brian Lee. I think he just joined us.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Good morning, Brian.
Morning. So I'll give a quick update and then moving forward, this is all very good news. Susan and April will be transitioning in as EOC Director and I will still be available to support them in whatever they need. So just a quick update for this week. We have our Kings Valley Clinic happening today. We got a good number of folks registered for that. And then Research Clinic's happening on Wednesday from 11:00 to 4:00. Thursday, which is Team Day, is going to be happening from 11:00 to 7:00. And then on Friday, we have Research from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We also have College Hill, which is a smaller operation, happening on Thursday from 9:00 to 12:00. So a lot of good stuff happening. We're getting closer to both to our 70% vaccination rate with the first dose. So we're really, really, really happy about that. Last week, just a quick touch in, we did our Monroe Clinic, Secondos Clinic on Saturday and had about 300 total administered. And then we also did Blodgett and had 20 individuals come through that clinic. So things are going real smooth on the EOC side. And we're looking at demobilization process here over the next three-ish weeks and slowly ramp down to make sure the Health Department is able to stand up and be supported by all their various pieces as they transition into what's next with vaccine efforts. Other than that, the management side is shifting gears and starting to do more prep for wildfire and get our EOC stuff and teams reset and ready to go. And that's all. End of report.
Thank you, Brian. I know wildfire is very much on everyone's minds this season, given how extremely dry the spring and winter have been. So crossing my fingers, but I'm glad that you all are preparing for it diligently now. Okay. Any questions for Brian? We will then move on to Suzanne Holland, Suzanne, Suzanne Hoffman.
Thank you, Commissioner. As Brian stated, we are still going full speed ahead in the EOC, but also beginning to transition toward our plan to demobilize and move back into a Department Operations Center, a DOC construct, with the Health Department taking over the rest of the way. Our last official day of the EOC being activated will be Friday, June 11th. That is the last week where we have a mass vaccination clinic at Research Stadium. And it's actually going to be a bit of a glide path. I think this week is yet very busy. Next week likely will be as well. And then after that, April can give you more detail on this. It'll be mostly second dose clinics to wrap up there. As we continue, of course, to plan for continued vaccination efforts throughout the county in a number of different ways. And again, April will share more on that. Brian is on the scene at the Emergency Operations Center, but is currently there to begin that transition process, assisting April and I in stepping into that EOC Director role so that we can, you know, literally walk in those shoes. April will be the EOC Director and I will be her backup. And we have, of course, a staffing plan laid out for that going forward that should enable the rest of the county, city, school, and other staff who've joined us at the EOC to return to their regular work. So something to celebrate there for sure. And then my goal is that within 90 days of establishing the Department Operations Center, is that we have a plan that has been approved and that we can implement that would actually demobilize the Department Operations Center if conditions still indicate appropriate at that time and really begin to settle the ongoing work that we anticipate having with regard to COVID response and recovery for the coming year or more into the, into the Health Department and largely into the Public Health Division. So that in fact, all of the Health Department folks, particularly Public Health, can get back to their regular work while still helping to manage and respond to COVID going forward. So we're, we're based with our plan. Of course, it's flexible and we'll, we'll change as conditions dictate, but that's where we are right now. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Suzanne. Moving on to April and April, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that we and all of you that we've achieved this fantastic first dose vaccination rate and that we have been invited to participate in a panel this coming Friday. April will be taking that slot to share with other counties the ways that we achieved these objectives and what we are still doing to address issues of equity moving forward. So thank you, April.
Thank you. And thank you for that opportunity to share our experience with Commissioner Ojuro. Good morning, everyone. As, as we all are well aware and have been celebrating, Benton County has, has more than 65% of our residents aged 16 and up with at least one shot of the COVID vaccine. Our Equity Plan, as we know, was submitted last week and we'll learn today if the county will move to the lower risk in the risk framework. Last week was a really busy week of new information coming in. We learned on Thursday of the new guidance from TDC on fully vaccinated. We are waiting for OHA before we make or communicate any information to the public on, on, on how to move forward. And we are advising the callers that we do get to continue the course until we learn more. Hopefully that'll be really soon though. Last week, we started vaccinating 12 to 15-year-olds and over 900 came to the Research Clinic last week. That's, you know, I, I know they probably all weren't Benton County residents, but 900 is about 20, over 25% of the, that age range in Benton County. Brian went through the clinics that we're holding this week. I do want to share an additional item. Yesterday and today, we, we have vaccine education sessions targeted towards parents in conjunction with the, the school districts. Yesterday's, last night was in English, tonight is in Spanish. And they are just a wonderful way to share vaccination information. We've got local providers, trusted people from, from different areas of the community to, to come together and increase confidence. We've got 39 people signed up for Kings Valley Clinic so far, and that is really encouraging that we'll have so many people coming in there. We're very excited about our Team Day event on Thursday, hoping for a really good turnout. This is, this will be the last dedicated first-dose clinic, so an all-day first-dose clinic at, at Research. There will be some drawings for, for incentives for the youth that come by and some activities that they can take place in. Some of the signage came in last night and it looks wonderful. There'll be some questions that the youth can, can respond to on sort of a big graffiti wall. So they'll ask why they're being vaccinated and, and, you know, what, what, what the hardest parts of the pandemic were for them. So really looking forward to that. Moving forward, you know, we still have some pieces to pull together with our partner Samaritan, but I believe there will still be a drop-in option, probably through a SamCareExpress. I just don't have those days of the week and the hours yet, as well as provider and pharmacy provision of COVID vaccine as we move forward. Samaritan is now a hub for Pfizer vaccine, and so they're going to really help us allow vaccination look more like a traditional model of delivery as, as we see it in all the places we're used to seeing it. And our focus here will be more of a move to help people access vaccination in the places that's already available, as well as providing smaller clinics and really focusing in on, on closing those equity gaps. We're going to continue to use our race and ethnicity vaccine data as well as our geographic data to inform our strategies. And we're doing a great job. We still have gaps and we'll continue to work on them. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
April, let's see. So on the vaccination rate and congratulations to everybody involved to have Benton County be the, have the best rate in the state. As I was checking through that last week, I found out that the rate is for people who have had the first year completed the vaccination or have had their first shot. And I think the rationale for that was, the number I saw was 95% of the people who've had the first shot got, come and get the second shot. Is that a statewide number? Is that accurate? Is that a Benton County statistic?
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. Yes, I, I haven't seen the metric for a few weeks for Research-specific vaccination, but a few weeks ago it was higher than that. It was, it was 97 and 98% running right along there. So we do have a very high return rate for second doses. We do see a little variation here and there, but by, by and large, across Benton County and across the state, people are coming back for the second dose.
Great. And my, my other question, and I kind of scanned through your kind of book report that you sent to OHA on the 13 questions, and you look very thorough and I'm pretty confident that we'll have good, good news today, assuming we do go into that lower-risk category starting this Friday. Would you anticipate, and if the question's too, too early, come back later, but would you anticipate that we would remain at that level for a nice period of time, like through the summer or? Just curious your, your thoughts on remaining in that nice level.
Sure. Yes, yes, sir, Commissioner. The, the Governor's Office and the State House indicated that when we move to the lower-risk category based on our vaccination rate, once our Equity Plan is submitted and approved, that we should stay at that level, at that risk level. That said, you know, if we do see something unanticipated occur, we may see some, some change there. But the, the, the hope and the path is that we'll stay at that low risk until the entire state reaches the 70% vaccination rate mark, at which point we would remove the, sorry, the risk framework altogether and just have less behind whatever basic safety guidance that, that TDC and others have for us.
Great. So thank you.
Thank you.
So I have one further question that dovetails with some of this. We're talking about winding down the department, like the EOC by the end of the month, the June 11th date. And our emergency declaration ends, ends the end of June. And at that point, as I understand it, from a financial standpoint, we have to have that emergency declaration in place or the state one in place in order to receive FEMA funds for supporting all of our efforts. But at this point in time, as I understand it, we have other sources of funding coming in that will cover all of those public health measures, the testing, tracing, investigation and all of that, and the ongoing lower level vaccination correct? So we will no longer be dependent on FEMA funds as the primary source of support response?
Sure, sure. I'd, I'd like to defer to Suzanne if she has anything additional on, on the length of time of the, the emergency declaration. I know we do have funds for case investigation and contact tracing. However, I do think that this will be a quite protracted response and I don't anticipate the end of the pandemic being announced anytime soon. Do you have something to add to that?
I don't at this time. I know that some preliminary information is starting to come in around continued funding for certain activities. I think that's information separate and apart from our, you know, American Rescue Plan Fund or things of that nature or anything you plan at the federal level. I would need to defer to Brian and Debbie Parsons on the FEMA details as they took the leadership role and submitted all of that. I don't see Debbie with us today, but we'll certainly follow up on all of that, all of that detail right away.
Thank you. I, I would be interested in knowing some of that financial side of the picture as we move forward and go back to a more normal path. Any other questions for April and Suzanne before we move on to Lilia?
Good morning. So I am back in the JIC this week. I have actually been over in operations for the last couple of weeks and it, it was a wonderful opportunity to get to work with EOC more closely and see all the intricacies of a vaccine clinic. At a former role, I, I had done a lot of events, but this is my first time doing the clinic. So it was really an exciting opportunity. So here in the JIC, we are eagerly awaiting the update in guidance regarding face covering. We're seeing more confusion in the public, in the news media about what to do about the face covering. So we can't wait to hear what the state has to say about that. I do, however, want to check in with Vance and the board on, I guess maybe protocol. If you all recall, and this was quite some time ago, almost a year, hang on, I just pasted a link into the chat, but last June, our county board issued a face covering resolution. And so at the time, this was before the state came out with their own face covering guidance. And so Benton County leaned in to a public health prevention protocols and put together this resolution. When the state's guidance came out, it went further with regard to indoor spaces. And at the time, for a little bit of time, I think that it hadn't covered outdoor spaces. Eventually, the state ended up covering outdoor spaces in their guidance. Anywho, so my question for Vance is, as we move forward and we hear from the state, is there anything that we need to do with regard to this resolution? Or is it just automatically overruled by changes in the state contract?
Our resolution stands on its own and independent of what the state mandates, suggests, or offers. So if we want to be consistent with the state, we would have to either rescind our resolution or adopt the new resolution that would bring us to alignment with the state. Because under our emergency authority, we, while we are in lockstep with the state, we have the authority to be autonomous in how we address pandemic measures. Does that answer the question?
That's perfect, Vance. Thank you.
Got to tell you, you caught me off guard.
That means that I, I get 10 extra points for today. Already, it's only 90. And, and the reason why I, I remember this in particular, Commissioner, is that was a very confusing time for our community. It was a contentious time for our community. If you recall, the, we had that incident at a coffee shop with an Oregon State Police individual, got some fair state news attention about it. And so what I'm seeing at least is that same confusion and the potential for contention to continue to arise. And so I just wanted to make sure that as we move into this next step, we're, we're just remembering that, that we did issue this resolution last June. And I think that it'll be an important thing for you all to consider as we learn more from the state. With that, the only other update that I have is that I'm working diligently to plan for demobilization. As Suzanne said, the last day that our countywide emergency response will be set up is June 11th. So on June 11th, the Joint Information Center will also be mobilized and it will transition into a Health Information Center that will move alongside the DOC, just as we've been doing in the countywide response. And as Suzanne and April plan the transition, you know, 60 to 90 days after the DOC, that, that communications will, will need to be updated as well at that point, but that work will be done by the Health Information Center. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Lilia?
Kate.
We'll all wait to hear what OHA has to say about face coverings and proceed to discussions I would guess sometime in the next week as to how we want to move forward for ourselves and with respect to this proclamation that is outstanding, this resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kate Portia.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nice to see everyone. So I'm going to maybe just tag on to what Lilia was saying and start with that, which is, as I'm sure you can imagine, with the business community and patrons of our businesses, there has been a lot of confusion. And so like, like Lilia and your team, we're also anxiously awaiting the guidance regarding masks. We've heard some, some different versions of what this may look like. One of those was that businesses themselves were going to have to ask for people's vaccination cards as proof to allow them to not wear masks. We're a little worried about, you know, putting businesses in the spot of sort of policing the masks. I think that can be very uncomfortable for them. And again, recognizing you all don't control that, but I just wanted to share some of the chatter that we're hearing on that. So again, just as Lilia said, I think really our team is already giving some thought to what we can do to help businesses create clarity and avoid that contention with interactions as people begin to shop. And we're talking about even maybe making some signs for folks. And if we, if we go that route, we'll definitely work with Lilia and your, your JIC team to, to make sure the messaging is consistent with any, you know, health guidelines and things like that. So working on that. I'm sorry, Lilia, did you want to say something at all?
No, Kate, I just was nodding and I realized that my camera was off. So I wanted to get the nonverbal. Sorry about that.
No, don't worry. We appreciate the, we appreciate the silent nod. No, thank you. So maybe in some happier news, I just wanted to share Heather and Catherine have continued with the PTE distribution on Fridays. It's been going really, really well. They reported to me we're going to continue that in the Fridays through the end of May. And they have had a number of takers coming from Adair Village, Monroe, and Palomos. So while we are doing this in Corvallis, this kind of a centralized hub, that hasn't, it hasn't only been Corvallis folks. And again, some of our partners, like the Palomos Chamber, have come to take loads out to Palomos and things like that. So we're, we're feeling really good about the, the reach on the PTE. The only other thing I wanted to mention today was that the micro enterprise CBVG program for the county is up and running and we're so excited about this and getting it out. As you know, Corvallis had already launched there, but so we had a waitlist of some folks from the county that were interested in your program. So we're making sure to get those folks in line and going. But we'll be spreading, spreading the word on that and some of the other programs, like the SBA's Restaurant Revitalization Program and Fund, which is open now. So we'll be continuing to spread the word on those out to businesses. So that's my end of report this morning. I'm happy to answer any questions.
On the, on the face mask discussion, I'm afraid that's going to take a couple of weeks to kind of get sorted out and figure out whose guideline is Trump. Well, I shouldn't use that word.
Supercede.
Supercede, thank you. Somebody else's. And hopefully we can get clarity from the Governor's Office. I think that would probably be the best way to go. probably be the best way to go. And then we can line up with those guidelines. I'm afraid there's, fortunately, we have, I think, pretty likely some good news to give our local businesses about dropping to a low risk rate. And so the mask, a little bit of confusion, shouldn't get top billing in this discussion. But hopefully, the governor's office will come through on a couple items here soon.
Indeed. No, we couldn't agree more. And I know you guys have said it this morning, but I just continue thanks to your team and volunteers and everybody that worked so hard to put Benton County at the top of that list. So when that 65 number came out, that we were on the shortlist to be able to drop down and your work on getting the equity plan done so quickly. We're grateful because it's really a tremendous difference for our businesses. But thank you so much.
Well, and finally, Benton County gets rewarded for doing a good job instead of being punished. So it was about time.
Indeed, indeed. Well deserved.
Thank you. I believe that is it for our update on COVID-related operations. And unless there are other questions, we'll move on to item 4.2, the second part of our update on Benton County's greenhouse gas emissions, with Sean McQuire, Jennifer Brown, Lilia Neville, and Michael Gardner-Brown.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. I'm back. I have a different hat on. It's invisible. Sean is going to be running technology, so Theresa, when you have a chance, if you could make Sean present her and just give me a moment, commissioners, while I transition my technology and find my speaking notes. Almost there. Okay. All right, Sean and Jen, are you both ready to roll?
Yep.
Okay, great. So good morning, commissioners. I think that's the fifth time I've said that, so apologies. Last time we were here, we were here at the beginning of the month, and we decided to split this presentation up into two parts. One, so that it would give you some time to kind of simmer on some of the impacts and activities that occurred over 2020, but also two, so we didn't overwhelm you with too much information. So last time, as I mentioned, we presented an overview of some activities and conditions that impacted our 2020 greenhouse gas emissions. So we'll be highlighting those throughout today's presentation, but today, we're going to dive into the 2020 data and our organizational successes. And at the end, I'll loop back around to talk a bit about our next steps and I think some opportunities that we have with regard to our new emissions tracking protocol and as we grow with regard to facilities in the future and how we do business with regard to the post-COVID world. So with that, Sean, you want to go ahead and take us away?
Sounds great. Thanks, ladies. Appreciate it. Hopefully, everyone can see the slides. Also excited, unlike May 4th, with no house-shattering explosion, so that's a good start. So as Lilia said, the intent is today is to do a more traditional annual report of our greenhouse gas emissions. In the past, we've kind of passively referenced our climate action plan, but this year, Jen's going to really walk us through it, as well as showcase the great work that we're doing and identify next step, which is what Lilia just mentioned. A little more explicitly, I'll be referencing May 4th, the presentation we had a couple weeks ago, but no need to go through that twice. We'll spend a little time with the source breakouts from our utility tracking and really focus along on renewable energy, basically just leading up to, as Lilia said, achieving our goal of by 2030 of half power reductions. So just so we're on the same page, our official goal that these commissioners have left here was that we need to be at 50% of 2010 greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and then be net zero by 2050. In addition, we have the little book from past resolutions. We are annually, last month, we're tracking our utility usage. We have to present to you each year on our greenhouse gas emissions check. We have developed and are implementing our climate action plan, but now we're moving forward to fine tuning that and expanding that and generally that later in the presentation and to publish our information and data to the public. I will be uploading this presentation to the website at the conclusion of this presentation. And those of you who are in the general public, if you go to the Benton County homepage and slash sustainability, you can find our climate crisis webpage where this presentation will be. So as a brief outline, the main topic of May 4th was the fact that we have a brand new protocol. Just briefly, we work in partnership with Corvallis, the city of Corvallis, and Michael is our climate crisis intern. And from this point forward, when I mention anything about graphs and I say we, oh, it's Michael. So as we move forward, in addition to the protocol itself and methodology, right now, our inventory tracks these five utility sources: electricity, fuel, gas, water, and waste. We are in the process now of the merger between natural oil and parks and fairgrounds. We already talked about this on May 4th, but a quick reminder, we want to make sure that's systematic and not just a data dump. So we're looking forward with IT so that staff can enter the utility usage into the same database that Public Works is using for these five. And then also on May 4th, we decide, commissioners, we decided that we will follow the new protocol, and that is if we have a tenant that is one out of our control and second, the utility usage is skewing to the point where 4,500 in Fireserve was, then we would exclude that. If I'm correct, just knowing from Lilia, yesterday, Fireserve was moving out or has moved out, I am very interested in hearing or seeing the next bill to see that we will no longer be powering North America with those servers over there. So this should have a demonstrable effect on as we move forward. Again, just very briefly commenting, it's going to take a couple of years for 4,500 to kind of normalize when staff was in and all that. Just to be clear, these five sources exclude natural oil and parks and 4,500, both of which will be our per connection. So let's get into it. So this is our net greenhouse gas emissions from Benton County government. And I'm going to stand this slide for a minute to walk us through. First and foremost, this is Benton County government. This is not the countywide, it's just how we operate. Second, it is net. So everyone's on the same page. The way we calculate it is we take our emissions, total emissions, and we subtract what we purchased from Pacific Power, Blue Sky, our renewable energy, and that's the net. And so that's what this number is. We're going to have a feature slide that can really walk us through that. Second is, excuse me, this is MT CO2E is metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. For those of you playing at home, there's far more greenhouse gases than just carbon dioxide, nothing that's actually more potent. But through scientific methods, you can normalize that into one number, and that's what it says. So it's just one number for all of greenhouse gases. So that's, and so this is the graph from 2010 to 2020. You'll see, kind of walk us through this, I hope you can see my mouth, this uptick between 2011 and 2014 is when we brought Sunset on. Well, not just one year, but that's why I said it. We kind of flatlined here. 2015 is an anomaly from fleet, which has less emissions. Conversely, 2019 was in the opposite direction. We had a few more vehicles, and so that's what spiked us. The key message from all of this is because we're only talking about like 2,500 tons, a little devil do you. Just a little bit of tweaks here and there can have a demonstrable effect on us to kind of get your mind around, oh, this year is 140,000 tons, and we're 2,500. So just to see little, little things can make a big difference. And as we explained on May 4th, this precipitous decline is all COVID, and we'll get into the specifics of that. I'll stop there. This is about a lot of information in about five minutes, so were there any questions? Okay. Oh, can I see Lilia?
Just one talking point, Sean. When we were running through this slide earlier, commissioners, I, and Sean, I apologize if you see this on a further slide, but Sean pointed out that this is the first year that our emissions levels have dropped below the 2010 level. And so we still have a ways to go, but I do think that that is notable, and that was a point that I really liked that you had shared with me at a time before.
Perfect segue, partner, because as we are sharing, yes, there is first, but we're doing great work, and the next two slides will show that, but it took, to be honest, a global pandemic to get it below 2010 levels, but we still have a far way to go. This is half, again, our goal is half of 2010, that's what's here. We're still way up there. So just to put it into perspective and to get support, what Lilia just said. Okay. So now we'll get into, oh, before we get into the specifics, we are doing great work, and I don't want that previous slide to share that we're not doing anything. So we also calculate by square footage and FTE, full time and place. So this is emissions per square foot. Again, here we go with Sunset again, 4,500 researchers not involved. We are below 2010. And we were below here in 2017 and 2018 before that spike in vehicles. Very similar story is by FTE. Again, lower back in 1718 and definitely lower because of COVID. Two things, again, we're doing great work when we normalize that across square footage and FTEs, but our goal is not based on that. Our goal is broad number, as we said in the previous slide, we are, we have a long way to go. So this is, again, I'm going to show you the graph, different ways of looking at the information, different, people have different brains, and so we'll just kind of give you different ways of showing this information. This is the utility, I'm sorry, the utility emissions per source. Electricity is half of all of the sources, that means we have fuel, gas, and water and waste pretty minimal. When I say that, I want to take just a quick second. In no way, shape, or form, don't interpret what I'm saying, water and waste are critical environmental issues. They just don't have a huge impact on the greenhouse gas emissions. So please don't interpret what I'm saying as me putting those two aside. This is another way of looking at it, and this is kind of interesting. This is our emissions by source over time. Again, electricity is, and here is the early about Sunset. In, I hope you can see that blue line, fuel, except for a dip in 15 and an uptick in 19, pretty solid, I mean, a cost considering the fact we brought in another 100 people. So that's pretty good. And then when we get down into natural gas, it's talking to the former facilities manager, Chris Beilinger. This kind of uptick starting in 15 were a couple of replacements of oil burning boilers, which hugely more carbon intensive than natural gas. So this is a story where this is good that this is going up because we didn't have the data of the oil burning before, so I can't really calculate that, but this is not a bad thing. This is us being far more efficient moving forward. And this is the story of water and waste. Again, hugely important environmental issues, they just aren't even on the chart when we start talking about greenhouse gas emissions. Okay. So then we circuit, we'll just briefly hit all five, except I'm going to stay on electricity for one big point, and that is about net. So these are, this slide, I'll be very clear, this is total emissions from electricity. Why I'm going on to that is this is our net, and so I want to walk us through this. In 2019, with your leadership commissioners, we began for the first time purchasing Blue Sky from Pacific Power, that is renewable energy credits. And so that's why you see this dip in 2019. There was about 23, 24 tons that we purchased. Two things happened. One, we doubled our purchasing, I'm sorry, we took it on July 1st, so we only had half a year. So that doubled in 2020, and Pacific Power then doubled the energy credits per block we purchased. So we quadrupled, and that's why you're going to see this 103, 104, 103, 104 tons that we purchased to offset us going down. Shameless plug, in our budget, we have a proposal of 25%, which we're going to get to later on, which should bring us somewhere down to here. Why I'm boring you with this is we got, as we move forward, if we're actually going to achieve our goal, we need to be producing our utility usage, installing more solar generation, so we're generating, and then whatever's left is what we're purchasing. And that's the story of the slide, just kind of walking us through so that this number gets lower and lower for us to achieve our goal. Then we get into fleet. Again, this year, 2015 and 2019, as we explained on May 4th, this huge decline is all COVID. COVID related, I'm just not driving around. Natural gas emissions, kind of bouncing around a lot, again, as we talked about purchasing or getting away from oil. This is a cool little story about why this went up. It really surprised Michael and I that natural gas went up. So then I talked to Paul, our facilities manager, and he asked me, so what's going on over Avery? And we looked at it, and Avery went up 45% in natural gas. We postulated the reason is because this was a very long, cold, harsh winter. And so when the folks over in, not in the buildings, but over in the food shop, when those bays are open, the boilers continue to work, and so we're basically heating Avery park. So this is a good story because they found this out because of this data, and now Paul is exploring different ways to either kill switch or something to turn that off when the bays are open. I'm sharing this information with you, it's just the power of data, whether it's CHIEF's new database for fleet, us tracking this monthly with this information, it empowers us as employees to be better and more efficient. So another, a pretty cool take home message, even though this actually went up a few times. Okay. Waste perfectly went down, perfectly, but it went down, this is all because of COVID. We didn't have employees making waste. Real quick, this dotted line, we facilities installed the compactor over Avery in 2014, so 2015 was the first full year. Before then, it was just, you know, pretty trash out, very similar to at your home. So we couldn't measure it. So the only thing we could do was take 2015 measures, take a ratio of FTEs and backcast. It was just the best we could do, and that's why you see this line. Moving forward, we have exactly how much tonnage, and there's a coefficient of greenhouse gas emission. And then lastly is water. Again, it's bouncing, it looks like it's bouncing all over the place. It's because we're only talking 10 to 15 tons, it's very minimal. This one ton increase in South Napole, they installed and upgraded the plumbing over at Oscars on Sixth Street, and just that flushing of water is what kind of upticked us this year. It's going to be far more efficient, it's just this year was a little bit of an up. So when you put this all together, this is the portion of total emissions. This is that one graph I showed with all five, and, okay, we're bouncing all over the place. Just by oddness, both years, even though the numbers changed, it's 50%. Fuel went down, obviously, we weren't driving around. Natural gas went up, as I shared. I should say, when we talk about percent changes, the total percent change was 20.4% on that net, as you saw. These numbers make total sense. I walked through it, made four, Sunset, Avery, all those buildings are going down 20%. Electricity is, LED stayed the same, so that's why this is. Fuel and waste are almost identical because people just weren't, they weren't driving around, they weren't in the buildings, and so we walked through this. So this is to kind of give you the percent changes, to kind of give you an idea of what happened. So then, want to share with you the renewable energy. So as I said, 2010, 2020, Blue Sky or Pacific Power doubled our block size, which helped us go from 23 to 100. We purchased about 380,000 kilowatt hours of renewable energy, which is 103, 104 tons. And we have this proposal that is in our budget to increase that. And as we get to, Jonathan is more specific, this is the only way we're really going to come close to achieving our goal. For the first time, I get to show you this slide. Because we brought in fairgrounds, this is our generation. I keep, sorry for being redundant, but just want to I keep, I'm sorry for being redundant, but just want to really take on the message, our utility is, we need to generate more and purchase more for us to reach our goal. Um, all of this from 2010 to 2019 is fairgrounds. This is, uh, solar generation at the fairgrounds. This upkick is from the health center over in Chantimney. Because for the first year, they came on late in 2019, so it could only capture very some of the 4500. We had those installed, uh, or they actually got linked up late in 2020. Uh, next year, this is going to go up and Jen's going to get into this a little bit later. As the solar arrays come on, this is going to get higher and higher. And this is so exciting. You know, when I started in 2015, there was nothing. There was just the fairgrounds and now more and more and more. So we're super excited that next year this is going to go higher and higher and higher. So, um, yeah, this is pretty cool. And then my last slide, of course, we get to Jen, we just kind of want to put this all into context. This is our goal, it's a half of 2010 emissions by 2030. When we look at this in electricity, it's easy to say, oh, okay, let's just buy our way out of this today. If life were only that simple. There's three major issues to think about this. One is we will be including naturalized parts at 4500 research way next year. There's also this little thing of a bond I hear about, this could be a correctional facility campus, not just a comp, which would obviously be far more than LED if, if, if everything is included. So this is obviously going to kick our electricity and our utility up. I need to take a second aside, and I haven't even had a chance to break with Leah and Jen on this, so my apologies. But Nick Kurz reached out to me yesterday, no, yesterday, about the, um, about this proposed campus. And Commissioner Roger, I'll, I'll read into you, um, I know you're a leader in this topic. And it was the first conversation that, that I've been approached with. And he was asking about, do we have a transportation policy? That is, how are people going to get between to and from? That could be staff, that could be people having to go to the correctional, this is, um, people with passport or whatever. I mean, that's going to be a huge up. And it really piqued my, it was a great question. Because when we talked about 4500 research way and lead, you have to have those discussions 16 months ago, which is exactly what you Commissioners did. And because of your leadership, that's going to happen. Similarly, and looking to these long-term policies, we need to have these discussions now. If we're really going to turn the dial and reach our goal. So we need to have that synergy of us working together and just trying to think about these long-term implications. So that's the first one. So again, apologies for the, just, uh, no chance to you before. Um, so then the second one is this, not only are, we're going to be more facilities, but we also have different sources to add into this new inventory. So first, it's not a huge impact. Consumption, that is to say, if pen, ma- mouse, anything, card, whatever, have a, uh, a carbon impact. So that could be included. Commuting, it is in our climate action plan, which, uh, Jen will showcase in a second, but it is not in our inventory. And so some of these things will be coming back to you, what should be included into the inventory. And then lastly, as, as Leah said, you know, on Friday of what, of what I'm just hearing, or in the coming days, we're going to be coming back to normal, whatever that is. What did we learn over the past 14 months? And how can we move forward and will we achieve our goals to keep some of those policies there? So that is the end of my, uh, presentation, but I want to make sure that there were no questions on the data set before Jen gets into the climate.
So Sean, I just wanted to thank you. Uh, this is, um, a very information-rich presentation. It's a level of detail that, uh, I think that, um, I don't know about the other Commissioners, but I've really been hungering for, uh, and asking all of those what-if questions and those, um, but what about questions that have been nagging at, I think, all of us. So I thank you. I, I can tell that your team has been, um, hard at work and doing a lot of system thinking about what it means to get to these goals. And that's exactly where we need to be. So thank you for that.
If I can comment on that real quick, Commissioner, I, I can't tell you, uh, I feel very bad, badly, for you Commissioners and Michael and I, and this is only getting these presentations at the last second, getting all this information. It's that urbanness of like, uh, of the, uh, the, uh, phone gate bridge. They start painting the one side and by the time they get to the other, you have to start all over. It's Michael and I going back and forth going, oh, this piece of information made me think about this. And this, we could go on, week to week, week. So I, I sincerely apologize for giving this to you so late, but that's the issue that Michael and I are having. And then we go back to Jen and Leah and it's, it is very thought provoking. So thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Malone, I think I interrupted you, I apologize.
No, no problem. Uh, and, um, I, I don't think you need to apologize for the, um, the lateness. I, I just appreciate that, uh, we're getting more specifics. It's, uh, um, been a heavy lift, especially going back and trying to recreate some of the, uh, data from a, a decade ago. But, uh, I, I really appreciate that, uh, the specifics, um, and it, um, part of the problem with the whole climate disruption, uh, discussion is it's such a big topic and, uh, kind of, it, it's easy to feel overwhelmed and, oh, I guess I can't do anything about it. Uh, versus, uh, getting into the, the details and where, uh, our actions can, can really, uh, move the needle. So, uh, you and your, your team, uh, I think are on the right track. And, and I think it really gives us a, a good roadmap to, um, move fo- move forward with. We, we've got our goals and, and now, um, go about, um, doing what we can to achieve them. So, uh, thank you.
Of course, sir. Thank you. If, if there's, uh, if there's nothing going on, uh, we're going to hand this over to Jen and she's going to get our climate action plan. So Jen?
All right. Good morning, everybody. So for this next section, we're going to dive into what actions the county's been taking to reach our emissions goal. But first, I'd like to take a few moments and just look at our climate action plan. Um, next slide. The cap, um, is meant to provide a structure and be a plan that guides us to our goal. The initial draft of the cap was created in 2018 through the work of a climate action committee that was formed just for that purpose. Um, the climate action committee is defining a real structure of the cap and what forces the county to the mission and target. Departments and staff were then engaged to provide input on actions. I just want to say that as our program and our ability to track emissions matures and refines, our cap is going to need to also. And recently, the sustainability program defined the language in the original cap. So for each source of emissions, we have five. Here you see fleet fuel, electricity, and natural gas, waste, water, and commute. We have clear focused objectives. We also have a section in our cap on other initiatives and actions. This section includes initiatives that adjust multiple sources like ongoing resource tracking and lead, as well as consideration of using our parks and other lands for carbon sequestration. Under each objective, there are a set of strategies. For example, what you're seeing here is in the area of electricity and natural gas. And as we're going to expand, um, this chart out to the next level, you would see that there's specific actions and next steps associated with each of these strategies that are possible. So I want to pause for a second and just see if there's any questions about the structure of the cap. All right. So let's take a look at actions the county's taken to reduce emissions from each source and specific, specific objectives are actually making progress on. These are the activities in the area of fleet fuel you saw, um, when Sean, Leah, and I presented last year. And I'm starting initially last year's accomplishments because, if we look at the next slide, they are still operating and their impacts on our emissions are still ongoing. But for 2020, the real success story in fleet was actually COVID, which forced us to change how we did things. It gave us the opportunity to institutionalize these associate meetings from just a few departments to everybody doing it. And it resulted in a reduction of miles given. The pandemic has really provided a window on how we can function remotely and have staff work from home. And it's led us in vision how we might alter our services in the county to reduce miles given. The result has been that departments are able to identify climate action goals for the coming biennium, such as Juvenal's actually done. And our existing fleet management system put in place in 2019 is going to make tracking possible. Additionally, I want to give a shout out to Keith, who's going to, who continues to green our fleet. So let's look at energy next. Here again, for electricity and natural gas, with the climate actions and accomplishments you saw last year when we presented. And here we are with a 2020 overlay. While the previous changes we made at our facilities continue to impact our emissions, every year Paul and his team make energy efficient upgrades in our county buildings. And 2020 was no exception. Also, the true nowhere there on this slide is that the solar array that was installed on 4500 in, in 2020, more than doubled, more than doubled our kilowatts of solar that we're producing. Next slide, in 2021, we're going to add another 100-plus kilowatt of energy with arrays going on in the Lincoln Clinic and, um, the law enforcement building. But knowing that we're never going to be able to install enough solar power to power all of our operations, we have a budget recommendation to increase our purchase of electricity from Blue Sky 25% of our total. See now for that free time. Um, so let's take a look at materials management. We continue to think that we need to find ways to reduce what was spent into the landfill through reuse and recycling. And in 2020, we developed an online inventory of what we have in surplus and reuse, and we added in gabber recycling in every facility. The Resource Efficiency Committee has really been, um, an incubator for a number of the materials management initiatives that are now in place. And all throughout 2020, a subcommittee of reps has been leading to explore resources and develop a recommendation for a sustainable purchasing program. Uh, when we talked last year, um, we discussed how 90%, 90% of emissions from the materials we use are upstream. So focusing on what we buy is way more important than focusing on what we do with it afterwards. Once we have a new director of finance centralized, and centralized purchases, the county's really going to be in a position to look at the emissions impact of our supply chain. And for our final successes, um, this year, we improved our resource tracking by adding fairgrounds to the inventory and refining our inventory, switching to ITD protocols. In 2020, Commissioners, we adopted using lead as, um, the standard for 4500. So this rating system looks at everything from building materials to waste management. And we're going for this silver at 4500, which is great. And using a system model for other, um, remodels and new builds we're doing. Finally, I want to talk to you about employee community. At the beginning of this year, we surveyed staff to learn how and how many miles employees are driving to get to and from work. With 80% participation in that survey, we learned a couple of things. One, our community has a significant impact on our emissions, which we're not yet capturing in our inventory. And two, there is really enormous potential to reduce this impact. The average annual mileage of a passenger car in Oregon is about 12,000 miles a year. So during COVID, every two weeks of our staff working from home would be equivalent to saving three passenger cars off the road for the year. The assessment department was able to look at survey data from their department and make a 2021, 23 goal to reduce the key miles given by their staff. And now we have two departments with goals to reduce driving. I want to pause here, please, if there's any questions. Okay. Let's look at what's next. Leah?
All right. So, um, Commissioners, this is, uh, a preview of what we plan to do next. So, uh, our very next step is to present this information for, to our leadership team. Um, we're shooting for July. We really want to equip our directors with this, uh, emissions information going into the next biennium, particularly our two departments that have specific goals that are going to address climate action. Uh, following that, the next thing that we're going to do is that we're going to start taking those steps to work to refine our climate action plan even more and align it with our emissions tracking. Um, as Jen said, the initial plan, uh, wasn't developed as an action plan informed and aligned with our tracking. Now that we're more mature as a program and, you know, more mature in our organizational commitment to climate action, uh, we have an opportunity to consider capturing additional scopes within our tracking. Um, as you've heard mentioned earlier today, potentially commuting, purchasing. This would be a substantial change and, and would require a lot of consideration. Um, by adding scopes to what we track, we make our goal harder to achieve, but it also gives our goal greater integrity. Um, so in addition to any direction the board provides to us, we will seek input from within the organization. Um, we're also going to seek additional expertise to ensure that our action plan addresses our emissions appropriately. For example, you saw, um, 50% of our emissions come from electricity. If the majority of our action plan focuses on waste and water, um, we're really not investing in, in the biggest bang for our buck. So we're going to seek some help and prioritize actions that are going to get the biggest return. Um, and so that's kind of the next step for this specific climate action plan. Um, but as I mentioned at the beginning, I said I was going to return to a couple of topics. Of course, that was first one, um, was about emissions tracking. But the second one is really about facilities and future growth, most predictably with the justice system improvement project, um, sorry, program, um, as Sean mentioned. So we showed you what a substantial impact the purchase of 4500 had on our emissions. Um, whether or not we build or purchase facilities for the justice system program in the next couple of years, it's going to substantially impact our ability to achieve our goal in the next nine years. Um, so one example that Jen mentioned is our current climate action plan has language about designing to lead standards. Um, however, the board just went through a process and determined that we're going to in fact go for that lead certificate for 4500. So I would say, you know, a question perhaps for the board, a policy question to consider is, you know, in order to achieve our, our goal by 2030, do we want to have that discussion on a facility by, by facility basis? Or, you know, perhaps is that a standard that you all want to set? Um, and then lastly, I just want to touch on COVID. Um, staying home to save lives also actually is helping us save the planet. Uh, so broadly speaking, we saw 20% reduction. And so the question really is, how do we sustain these reductions as we create this new normal, um, as we're going into low risk and as we're eventually coming back together, uh, in our office space? So I think that there is going to be a lot of opportunities, um, potentials for maintaining teleworking as part of our normal business practice. Um, the virtual meetings, maybe, uh, more considerations about moving to an electric fleet. And there's probably a lot more. Uh, but I think that they're all going to be tough conversations and, and tough decisions. Um, so we'll be coming back to the board with more considerations over the course of the year as we work to update the climate action plan. Um, but we're certainly eager to hear from you all where you'd like to see more information or content, uh, to help inform some of our decision-making. So with that, that is the end, um, of our presentation. And I think we've got plenty of time for discussion and questions.
Excellent. Uh, questions from Commissioners Wise and Malone?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. Um, I think what would be helpful to me is, um, maybe giving, uh, specific options. Uh, Leah, you just mentioned, uh, electric vehicles and that, um, uh, I, I didn't see that earlier in the, uh, presentation. I, I think that's, uh, if, if we're not there today, uh, we should be, uh, really soon. I think, uh, a lot of, uh, pieces are, are lining up to make that more, uh, practical. And, uh, I, um, I like many parts of this, uh, presentation, uh, because it gives us, uh, the opportunity to lead by example. I, I think that's, uh, that's, uh, critical, uh, that, uh, we're not just, um, doing nice charts and graphs and, and happy talk, uh, that, that we're actually, um, putting our, uh, resources, uh, where, where we, uh, believe they can do, do the most good. And, uh, anything we can do to operationalize this, this effort, uh, get, uh, all our departments, uh, on board. So then we're all rowing in the same direction, and I think is... so that we're all rowing in the same direction, I think is critical. And having specific metrics, I think will make that task a lot easier because on a pretty short-term basis, we can see how we're doing and maybe encourage the departments that are doing well and also encourage and make suggestions for departments that maybe are lagging a little bit. But I definitely agree to kind of concentrate our efforts where they're going to do the most good and have a relatively short list of priorities that we share with everyone within Benton County government. So I think this is great work, and we're at the point where we can make budget decisions that will improve our performance. So, because I remember having this discussion a couple of years about our goals over here and the budget over here, and I think we've made pretty good progress merging those two efforts. So I think that's what I've got.
No questions, just thank you for the presentation and all the information.
I can say from my, thank you Nancy, from my standpoint, I have been a favor for a while of having a building standard in terms of resource conservation. So I would be interested in exploring that conversation with respect to LEED or it seems to be the most robust in the universe, excepted standard out there. And the other, of course, is how to sustain the COVID gains. And I'm curious to see with the increased centralization of our staff at 4500 research way and with such proximity to the Sunset Building, whether that also reduces miles driven, whether we can retain some of the gains that way as well, although that doesn't take into account the commute. And I think that we can explore working with HSS over in HR, how to incentivize increasingly, you know, alternative transportation, getting more of those steps and miles in on bicycle and on foot, perhaps working with that help promotion program to consider climate also. So I think you all are thinking in the right directions. I look forward to having you bring back a menu of options. I did have one big question, and that is something that didn't get addressed directly in your presentation, but I know was in there somewhere. And that is the conversion of our heating systems to heat pumps and electricity from natural gas. And I, it's a subject I don't know very much about, and I know that heat pumps are very efficient and can use GUSCI energy resources upper a home level scale, but are they also capable of addressing office open scale? I don't know enough about that and about whether that is a direction we might want to consider for some of our facilities as well.
Sean, I don't know if you know anything about heat pumps, or Jen, I certainly don't, but I would be happy to learn more and bring that back to you, Commissioner. I had a comment that I'd like to revisit with regard to the commute gains that you mentioned, but Sean or Jen, do you have any information regarding heat pumps that you'd like to share, or would we like to follow up on that one?
I think I'll talk to Paul about specifics. I think getting to your pitch, your point about us becoming more efficient, as efficient as we can, I think that a great example of the two HVAC systems on top of research that Paul and Gary are pursuing. And especially just back on our building program manager back in Maryland a few years. And it's just that ripple effect that one piece has. So not only are those HVAC systems going to be more efficient, we're also talking about we're getting the lead about indoor air quality. And the air filters now are so great, but it also takes higher power for them to push through. And the older HVACs couldn't do that, not heated and all these kinds of adjectives, but couldn't do that. So heat pumps aside, on a mass scale, we are continually trying to be as efficient as possible, not just on the energy side, but on multiple areas that some of these applications positively address. So, but specifically on the heat pump, I can work with Paul and get an answer back to you.
My understanding from Paul, from the list of updates he's done, upgrades he's done, is that he's planning in 2021 of doing hot water heat pumps at 4500.
Cool. So we will follow up with some more detailed information with you all about heat pumps. But thank you both for that contribution right now. I just wanted to hit on the teleworking piece and the employee commute piece and COVID. So yes, for me, it takes some intentional effort in my mind to bifurcate the miles and emissions created by employees getting to work and then specifically the driving that employees do once they're at work. And I used to confuse them all the time, so I totally understand that. And I think that we probably do have some work internally to educate our staff and employees about the difference between the two and what's tracked and what's not currently. However, what I want to say is that I don't think that teleworking is going to be a one-size solution. I don't necessarily think it's going to be, we think Benton County employees should telework two days a week and be in person three days a week. Jen has done some really wonderful work in her assistance to the assessment department. And so I just wanted to provide that as context. So Jen did the commute analysis of all assessment staff, and then Jen and myself and Tammy Tracy and a member of Tammy's team sat down and reviewed it together. And we, you know, talked about the team dynamics and how that was impacted by teleworking. We talked about office productivity, and we talked about all sorts of things. And what we did was come up with a goal that we felt was aspirational, but also achievable, you know, and really trying to create cultural change that folks can glom onto. We didn't want it to be too much. So I certainly know that Jen would be more than happy to do that with every single one of our departments. I think it's about having the will and the commitment from leadership to say that, yeah, yeah, departments, you know, we really do want you to do this. So I just wanted to provide a little bit more clarity on the COVID and teleworking piece.
Thank you. Are there other questions, discussion?
Commissioner? If I could kindly just get 90 seconds, if there's no more questions, that's okay.
Just wanted to give a shout out to Greg for his leadership in kicking off the sustainability program and helping us to get to where we are today. And thank you for your support and attempted, Greg, much appreciated.
Thanks, Lynn. Yes, thank you, Greg. I just wanted to end with, Michael had to log off. He is now running the climbing wall over at the bed house, so he just started that a few weeks back. Yeah, of all people, that was a perfect job for him. But I also want to say just two things. One, as back when I was in the Secretary's Office of Natural Resources, we had an internship program with University of Maryland and graduate students. So I had the joy of working with many of those interns, and I take Michael every day of the week and twice on Sunday. I have rarely been, worked with someone who had attention to detail and integrity and imagination. It's hard to think of imagination in Excel spreadsheets, but somehow he did it. So again, he's not here, but I feel compelled to tell you Commissioners that I strongly believe this organization, this community is better off from its work. I also wanted to share, there's no way that we could do a review without this internship program. And I just really want to thank you for committing resources to having a climate action intern every year. And I'm still in contact with past internships, so interns. So it's not just a one and done thing, it really relates to the salary. So I just want to share a little with Commissioners, and thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. We really do appreciate all of the fantastic interns we've had over the years, and especially when we have one that was around long enough to really give us that increment, not incremental, but the quantum jump in the capacity for analysis. So that's very, very helpful. Okay. If there are no other comments or discussion on this topic, we will take a break until 10:30, and then we will pick up with our next business, a business meeting. See you all at 10:30.
Nancy and Pat, are you ready to roll? Teresa?
Yes.
We shall resume. Okay, we are picking up our business meeting with item five, the consent calendar. We have two items, a matter of approving an amendment to the economic development contract between City of Corvallis and Benton County and board meeting minutes from April 6, 2021. Do I hear a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you for that bit of business. Moving on to item six, departmental reports and requests, we will begin and end that section of our agenda with Joe Martis from Public Works.
Nancy, Joe. Oh.
That's back here. Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. This first off is the restrictive covenant that was required by our engineering department. This is the agree to a future dedication of road and utility purposes. The reason behind this is for future development. Right now, the Pony Dreams LLC are partitioning their property into three parcels. So that's a planning action. So we're allowed to actually put the future right of way and preserve it when the city actually grows out in that area, we'll have a chance to have the right of way dedicated in the future. Any dedicated right of way, of course, in our development code, you actually have to build a road. So we don't want them to build a road just yet because it's not needed. But there will be future development and they'll divide up the property more. Also, it adds connectivity. As you can see, it starts at Kamala and then it gets back out to Scenic. So this allows a lot more development in the area in the future. We don't want anybody to build their house on this. We don't want them to put their settee in that area. So it's actually acts just like a road, has setbacks and everything from it. It's like a regular road. Then when the future comes and they dedicate the right of way. And then, because in the past, we had not done that. And now it calls to a little bit more planning ahead. And now we can get having to beg for the right of way or eminent domain. We actually have something in place to actually get the right of way.
Are there questions for Joe? So I'm assuming that our engineering staff worked and community development worked with the City of Albany in order to put this together to make sure that it all met their needs as well?
That's correct.
Ooh, there are two paths. Pat, are you trying to speak?
No, no.
Okay. I, do you have any questions, Nancy? No. Okay. I'm making a motion or unless the twin, one of the twin paths would like to.
Go ahead.
I move to accept restrictive covenant from Pony Dreams LLC agreeing to future dedication for road and utility purposes.
I will, I will second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Excellent. Moving on to next item.
Hey, let's see. Again, this is a easement across the same property. We decided to actually do this type of easement to actually Benton County. It's just a little bit more leverage. And let's say in the restricted covenant, the owner says, I'm not even going to do it. And then we go, well, then we got to take you to court. We really don't want to do that, but we still have to have the covenant. We created a easement for road and utility purposes that gives the actually the right county to actually dedicate the right of way if it actually is needed at some time. Also, the dedication, of course, the county does not have to maintain this. You have that written in there. Also, we can maintain it if we want to, but we have it written in there that we don't have to. So that keeps it from, when you dedicate right of way and it gives it to the county, of course, there's a responsibility for the county to maintain things. So in this issue, this is just an easement. And the easement is just to Benton County. A lot of people get kind of mixed up that I think this is a public right of way. It's not. It's an easement to the county only. So we only allow the county to do business in there. So if we wanted to go in and maintain it and actually build this road, we could actually do that. We usually don't because we usually will have the developer do all the building and creation of the road. This will probably be a curb and gutter eventually in the future. This is northwest of the actual City of Albany.
Okay. Are there questions for Joe with respect to the right of way acquisition? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I will move to accept the easement policy from Pony Dreams LLC for road and utility purposes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you, Joe.
One thing added, as soon as the documents get signed, I have that written on the agenda, that have the people call me and I will record them with the partition plan because I have to write those numbers on the plan and everything. So I will do all the recording and everything. So as long as they get signed, just let me know and I will take them over to the recorder's office and I'll handle all that.
Okay. So you need me to come down and sign documents?
No. The actual documents that you have right now, the originals, they have to be signed by the chair. So you have those in your hand. Just let me know when they're done and I will take them over to the recorder's office. And because we're in conjunction with this gentleman's House of Pony Dreams partition plan. And so he's trying to move ahead on it, so.
Okay. I'll get down there and sign those as soon as I can, hopefully by the end of the day today.
Yeah, I believe you have the original documents in the board office yet.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our list of other items. The first item is approval of the equity plan that was submitted to Oregon Health Authority to enable Benton County to move into the low risk category as of this Friday. Said equity plan was formally approved by OHA. Is there any, are there any further questions, comments about that plan or about the process that we're looking to get there? We submitted it last Friday by the 4:00 p.m. deadline.
If there's no further discussion, I'd just like to say I did look over the plan and was impressed with its thoroughness. So I will be glad to make a motion to approve Benton County's equity plan for vaccination that was submitted to the OHA.
Thank you. All in favor, signify with an aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Next, Pat, you had mentioned wanting to have a discussion about the NACO steering committee opportunity. We need to indicate to our Association of Garden Counties staff by the end of this month, the 31st, using a form that was emailed to us, if we are interested in any of the steering committees. And I can tell you that I've been participating in the Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee, but not very actively at this point in time. They have a monthly telephone call and then meetings periodically in person in conjunction with the two conferences that are hosted by NACO. So I have attended several of the others and I would be happy to provide input if you're interested in those. And otherwise, open for discussion.
My question was just, it's an opportunity, but I don't have much detail on how much these things take effort to get anything out of them. And I guess my question is, is it, from your perspective, is it worth the effort?
It, as I said, as I mentioned, I have not been actively engaged recently. The previous staff person was very good about sending out notices of the monthly calls and meeting minutes. And I have received nothing from the Public Safety Steering Committee for many, many months. So I'm not sure whether I fell off the list. It feels like it. So I need to probably re-up and let them know that I still am engaged and interested. I found it particularly helpful in the initial, early days of COVID because the Public Safety Steering Committee includes all of the emergency responders, emergency managers. And I frankly learned more at the NACO conference last year than just about anywhere else about what was happening and where, how things were shaping up from my peers around the country and other counties. So I think it's worth it. It's not a large investment, but it's probably, you get the most out of it if you actually go to the NACO conferences. So that said, let me see here. There's not much of a, there's not a problem doubling up, but they like to spread people around in terms of the AOC membership. AOC is quite involved in energy and land use. That one, I believe, is chaired by Commissioner Crivens from Coos County. We have quite a few people involved with the Health and the Human Services and Education Committee with public lands. But I think there's less involvement with some of the others. Ag and rural affairs is also well represented. I have found the Energy and Environment and Land Use Committee to be really fascinating. Both the Health and Human Services and Education Committees are really interesting. And I have only attended maybe one meeting of the Community Economic and Workforce Development Committee. So I don't know as much about that one.
Okay. Well, that's helpful. So is it up to the individual commissioner to kind of appoint themselves? And maybe AOC might do a little guidance, say, well, we got a lot there and we got a hole over here. Do you have an interest in that? And who would, AOC is handling that?
Well, with Sarah Gamone, I believe, that sent out the notice, but it's McKenzie that has been the one that has coordinated in the past and probably will this time around as well. And it is self-selection by interest. They will probably let us know who else is, and how many other commissioners there are interested in that particular committee. The other thing that I would mention is that you can be on more than one, but to be on more than one, you have to have, I think, NACO president approval, executive committee approval. So it's in exceptional circumstances. The last thing I'd point out is there are several task forces and some of those are very interesting. I've attended a lot of their meetings. You don't have to be a member. And I think that all that gets you is an extra set of meetings to go to by telephone over the year. But the work sessions that they have at the meetings can be extremely helpful in learning about what's going on in other counties with issues that are relevant to all of us.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning the deadline. So that's helpful. And that's, I just wanted a little background because I know you have been involved and just, we have all kinds of opportunities to be involved in a limited amount of time, so.
Nancy may know even more because she's been involved in the leadership program at NACO. So Nancy, any other suggestions or advice from your end?
Not as it pertains to the Leadership Academy classes, but I will say I was intending on signing up for one. I'm not, I don't feel strongly about which one necessarily to sign up for. More or less, just wanted to use the opportunity to learn something and be involved and kind of learn a little bit more about NACO. And I was just assuming it was like the League of Oregon Cities where you throw your hat in the ring and they decide who gets in and, you know, if you don't get appointed to that one, then maybe they'll put you on another one. But I don't know, I've never done it, so.
It's similar, but I don't think that there's so much demand that it's challenging. But as Pat said, they do try and make sure that the Oregon delegation is spread out across the different public areas. Okay. There's no action on that item. So the next item we have for discussion is some subscriptions and memberships. We are up for renewal for our subscription to the Capital Press and it costs $55 a year or 100 for a two-year subscription. And we need to let Teresa know whether we are interested in renewing. Personally, I appreciate it. It gives me a different perspective on things and a much more regional perspective on our agricultural issues and some of the agriculture, agricultural economy, as well as on some of the human resources issues related to the ag sector.
I think we're talking about the big magazine that I find on my desk and it's like initial and moved to another one or it's different? Okay.
No. The Capital Press, you have worked in the office regularly, Nancy.
No.
It's actually a tablet style newspaper that comes once a week and it is all agricultural news, focuses on Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. But there's an awful lot of Oregon coverage. And yeah, we usually have it in the break room on the table where the other newspapers are kept so that everyone can have access to it. As I understand it, the history here is that Ann Schuster, when she was commissioner, really wanted to get it. And initially, the subscription wasn't her name, but I was equally interested in regularly reading it. So we ended up making it an office subscription so that we could all have access to it.
Yeah, if you guys are interested in it and find it useful, we'll read it, then I will support that. I try to go away from too much printed hard copy stuff. I mean, it just builds up, you know, as far as getting like my own personal copy, I'm not interested in that.
No, 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 no. Shared subscriptions and, you know, having it in the lunchroom pre-COVID was definitely the way to go because it was accessible to everyone. Pat?
Well, I was afraid I was going to be lonely on this one, but if I I was afraid I was going to be lonely on this one, but I appreciate the Capital Press and part of the reason there. We get so much Oregon coverage, they're based out of Salem, and so that's relatively easy for them, but I would, I would love to have it in the break room on a regular basis. This past, I think it was this last issue, there was an article on water, and because of where the Columbia River starts in northern British Columbia and the Rockies, the Columbia, and they had maybe even above-average snowpack, that there's more water, or there's plenty of water in Columbia for this summer versus our local streams and reservoirs that are down 20, 30, 40 percent. So I'm a yes on that one.
Okay, I don't know that we need a formal vote in terms of subscription, but just a thumbs up, so it sounds like we are a thumbs up. Next item, we've got to do the same thing as the Corvallis Chamber of Commerce Renewal. It's due this month, and that's a little bit spendier, of course. $1,500 membership, and I will put in a shameless vote for the chamber in the sense that they need every member they can get in order to stay solvent at this point and remain viable. And I believe that we gain quite a lot from our membership just in terms of the networking and their ability to communicate with our local businesses. Nancy?
Yes, I agree, and they do a lot to support the businesses in Corvallis, and so, you know, by supporting them, we are supporting Corvallis businesses, so I am all for it.
I agree. It makes sense to be part of the business community, and they're pretty good, even in COVID times of being organized and letting people know what's going on, what the needs are, and so I think that's a worthwhile investment.
Okay, so Teresa, I think you are still here, and you captured our thumbs up on these two items?
Uh, yes. Yes, I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our last item of business is to go into executive session under ORS 192.6602D, deliberations with negotiating team. Do I get points, Nancy?
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Just one, I don't get 10?